We're at the meeting of the 11th and 12th Council on Mountain Drive today. As you can see, it's one year. This time, if we could all stand, please, I'd like to ask Mr. Travis Lamb to come forward for our invocation, and then we'll follow that with our pleas of allegiance. Travis, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father in heaven, let's once again come calling upon your holy and righteous name. Lord, we come to this meeting, Lord, with thanksgiving. We thank you for the opportunity to gather in a country that provides us with liberty and freedom to have this meeting, this session. Right now, I pray that you give us wisdom as we move forward through this meeting. Lord, while we may have differences of opinion, I pray that we are of one spirit, one accord, and one mind. So, Lord, I thank you for this town council, this community, this town and all that it represents, and I ask that as we move forward, you give us wisdom, understanding, ability to communicate, ability to listen, and all things will keep thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
A clear allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the vehicle of believing and justice for all.
Thank you again, Travis. Okay, we're now, our council, we're at our part of the agenda to where we edit the agenda of the business that's not located on the agenda. Does any council member have anything they wish to add tonight?
Hey, Mayor, I've got some motions coming forward from the ARPA committee that are okay just to do it or committee reports.
Under your committee report, to be fair. We've asked during Tam Man's report, because I think he's already ordered about the believing report. Any, is there a motion to approve the attendance presented?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Is there a motion to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Next on the agenda is our minutes from our lead regular council meeting in January and on January 10th. Does everyone have a chance to review those before the season? We have a motion to approve the minutes from the January council meeting. We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Next out is approved accounts payable. Drew, do you have any bills that you need to add that we didn't already receive? No new bills? I'm calling the chair of the finance committee, Mr. Gilmer.
Mayors, if there are questions, I'll move to approve the January accounts payables presented. I've got a couple of questions, Mayor, for the board.
Let me get a second. Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Short, on the last page of accounts payable under Virginia Department of Transportation, there's a total of $23,268 from 104 to 131. Some of that says road saw, managed snow and ice removal, some of it just says road saw, some says snow and ice removal. That is all road saw. I want to verify that. Other than that, Mayor, I'm good.
Can we read this forward?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor of the motion to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Well, I want to thank our town 11th planning commission for being here tonight. This time, I will declare it the town council in a joint session with the 11th planning commission. Mr. Chairman, do you have a call?
Yes, Chair.
Also, I think, I don't know if all your members know, item two, Ms. Boyd's request has been withdrawn, had a virus. So, I guess we'll start with Mr. King.
Yes.
Turn it over to the chairman at this time.
Thank you. Would you please bring that back, take your voice.
An application submitted by Stephen King to place the double-wide mobile home on the property located behind 207 Tree Drive in an ARB-1 single-family dwelling district. All adjacent property owners have been notified.
Does it speak in favor of that petition? I'm assuming Mr. King, Arthur, if you would come up, please. You would just explain to the members here in the town council exactly what your plans, Arthur?
Um, we have the city-town line there, I guess the town-county line. We're trying to get into the town limits, you know, for water sewer access, you know? If not, we could put it over in the county, because I talked to the county about it, but I just figured it'd be, you know, cheaper if we moved it that way, easier on the driveway too. And what it is, it's a 2022, you know, double-wide, process being built, you know? It's a new home. It's going to be put on a permanent foundation, block, rock underneath.
All right. Just want a couple of observations, just for me. You probably know this already, but wherever you locate it, water sewer, it will be your responsibility to get it to the town.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
Regardless if it's inside that mapped area or you decide to go across, I'm assuming, depending on, I think one of my colleagues said, the proper file exists up there, Drew? Let's say we did, let's say he wanted to put it on the county side of his line, is town water and town sewer available to him?
I have out-of-town rate.
Okay. Just want to make sure you do that.
Yeah, I'd already asked about that.
Right. Is that it?
I was just, I didn't, I've never went through this before, but I'm pretty about it.
How far from the county line back inside town are you looking at?
Um, it's, we were looking like the middle distance between the property line and this one. How are you going from there? I have a 30-foot burn buddy already there.
Yeah, I sound just.
If you go here.
This is, this is a county.
Yeah.
This is kind of like off.
But I was just trying to say that you have.
Any questions?
All right. Ladies and council, do we have any other questions for Mr. King?
Anyone else here to speak on behalf of the application? At this time, anyone here to speak against the application? At this time, I'll take the motion to approve the application.
I'll move.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
On the page, if you have a say aye?
Aye.
No, we have a hard one there, so, Mayor, most of the pass, all you men, if we will pass.
Planning Commission, majority vote was to approve the application. Okay. Anything else from our planning commission this evening? This time, I'll close the joint public hearing. At this time, Mr. Chairman, if you could go for counsel with official recommendation.
Mayor, members of council, on a vote of five to one, I guess it would be approved for the application bill, which is presented to the council, provided it meets all regulations within the town as far as driveway, the street, everything as far as the city, everything that meets with the town's spec as far as the building permits and so forth.
Mr. Taylor, that does require the under peony and all that in that, in this other requirement.
I think you can require, yes, it'd be permanent.
Is that your plan, Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
To make a permanent location?
Yes, sir. It will be a permanent block foundation with a rock cap.
A rock cap around.
Designed, rock cap.
And while we're at it, let's add, we talked about a bit, put some sort of decent-sized porch on the front.
We've gotten into that before, and we just said decent-sized porch. Unless we've got something that specifies, I can see someone putting that in there. We put it every time, and we never put anything as far as what, I understand that, I'm not saying that, we don't, we don't put any inside porch on it. It doesn't get it.
It's four.
I'm not sure.
Oh, you didn't vote?
I'm not sure, no. I was going to ask questions. Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Jackson didn't ask any questions.
Okay. What I was wondering, I mean, are you the only one going to be in there for six quarters?
No, that's, that's the only one that will ever be put in there. It's just, yeah, it's not going to be developed or anything like that, it's just my dog. I'm just upset.
So, you own the house there?
I took, yes, the house, and they bought property in behind, and they're just going to put a house close to us. It's not going to be a development.
And cannot be a trailer park or anything like that?
No, no, it'd just be one home put in.
I'll say yes to that.
Yeah, yeah, there's no future.
Is that Miss thing?
Was that the recon vote, sir?
It is, ma'am.
Okay.
You're good, you're good. Your vote was yes.
Just so we can clarify, Mayor, I'm not saying anything about it before, we just say that they, that be built, and we don't have any specs that I'm aware of that says what those specifications are, so there's no need to be any source.
Okay.
That'll be a porch.
Okay.
That's what, and I'm sure they will, so, yeah, we do that.
All right. Very good. All right, council, I understood our planning conditions, they have met, they've talked to everyone here that was related, they have made a recommendation to the council that the application be approved, so, that's it, is there a motion from council?
Let me ask them a question.
You can't, sir.
Okay, I have, because I have a question. My address is 273 Hillside Drive, was supposed up to the back of this property, and I did not receive a letter, I was not notified.
I don't have anything to do with the letters.
Oh, sorry. So, I, I mean, yes, yeah, everybody on the front, I'm sorry, everybody on the front was notified, and I'm not sure that those that are living on Hillside Drive were notified.
You're probably guessing it?
Mm-hmm.
Because it's not showing that on this.
My property goes all the way back to that fence line. My property goes all the way to that fence line, all the way down to the county line. That corner lot is two and a half acres.
You're 270 turn?
I am.
So, I guess this is showing 295 between your lot and.
Yes, but my property goes, my property's line goes straight back.
Back to that corner?
Yeah. Well, it just goes, it's from, to that 273, mine goes straight back.
Up the hill there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's all right. That's okay, that, so that was my question, I was, didn't know why I wasn't notified about it.
Do you have a problem with that, Mary? What do you know?
But you were here this evening for the planning commission.
Well, I'm going to let Elijah discuss, I mean, I, I am concerned, my concern does come with the putting in of a trailer park, I mean, I understand that you all own it now, but then future down the road, if you all don't, you know, that's, I guess, going to be my.
We can put it in right anyway.
Yeah, you know, that, that is, if it is, I mean, that's, and you all know, because I've seen you up there, is that it's a well-established neighborhood with great neighbors, friendly neighbors, it is a wonderful place to, you know, I'm going to be biased because I live there, you know, to raise a family, and, you know, so that is my, that's my concern of, you know, being a property owner, you know, on that, in that neighborhood of the possibility of taking that property that has always been homesteaded, you know, until, and then it, with that access there at the end of the road, you know, opening up the door for it to be.
Yeah. Well, can I ask, Mr. Taylor, one thing?
Sure.
In my view, doesn't it agree on there that I can never have, like, double-wide or, I don't know, we were discussing that.
In the, in your house.
If we put that in clause with this, with their buildings, where it can, you know, like, no more be added?
Yeah, you can restrict it.
Can we restrict it like that, where there'd be no fear in this property? We turn it into a mobile home park or anything and just be that?
So, could I, could I address that just a moment? What you're talking about, about the mobile home park, that, you know, I would like for council to see if they agree with this, but in my opinion, if they ever wanted to do that, they would have to come before planning commission and council on national additional use permit for a mobile home park, it ain't permitted by rights, so I don't think that would be a problem.
I think one thing, we, the council may look at it at a future date as well. On the ARB-1 restrictions, I think that needs to be, I don't know how we could do or even if we could do it at this time, but the ARB-1 is the most restricted property that we have, yet we're doing a conditional use permit on, whether it be a Y's for a home or a double-wide, we're always stuck between lots of difference between the two. If it's ARB-1 restricted, maybe we need to look at it as a ARB-1 restriction as it is instead of a conditional use permit period. That just may be something the council will look at at a later date, and I don't even know if that's possible, but it was safe.
I think this little Kevin is aware of it already, and I think it's something that we're going to have to, I hope what you're saying is, Chairman, and it's well made, I think we have to decide if that's even an option tonight, so. Any other questions?
The only thing I have for the, for the mayor and the town council, I will be at the March meeting, I have already been contacted by a project that's been turned in there, possibly April, and then I'll be resigning from the planning commission, you'll need to appoint a new member, please, sir.
You'll be here through the April meetings?
I'll probably be here through March and April, probably be the last meeting.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, we thank you for your service, you helped, and I appreciate all you've done, and we'll be talking to you in March of this year.
All right, anybody?
Mayor, I have a question. Drew, are we able to run water and sewer if it's in the county?
Yeah.
And obviously brings it to the town, so if it's in the county?
Yeah, we have, we have out-of-town rates.
Okay. But we are able to run it?
Well, we don't run it, but yeah.
Okay.
They'll put it in the town, do you care? Yeah. But it is your responsibility to bring it to the town.
It is, that's what we talked about, you know. Okay, we, we're now at a point where we, any other discussion, we've had a recommendation from the planning commission, what's council's pleasure?
I'd like to discuss this, Mayor, if I may, or should I wait for the motion? We can have discussion after the motion.
Yeah, I'd like to have a motion in a second, then have discussion. Do I have a motion regarding the planning commission's recommendation to council?
Still no.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
May I have discussion?
Mr. King, first off, I appreciate you counting, I appreciate you showing us what's going on here and being transparent with us. The only issue I have, and Mr. Ramey pretty well brought it up, it's an ARB-1 designation, which is the most restricted in town. The issue with that is, is in the ARB-2, there's nothing in an ARB-1 that speaks, speaks upon a mobile home. In the ARB-2 dwelling, under section B, additional use is permitted by conditional use permit, would be a mobile home or a mobile on an individual lot, which is what we're speaking at. But in an ARB-1, which is the most restricted, I don't, there's not even a conditional use permit available besides here, section C, we state nothing about a mobile home. So, I'm not sure, Mayor, that we can approve a mobile home in an ARB-1, because nothing spoke about a mobile home in an ARB-1, it's the most restricted in town.
I think that's what Bobby's saying, the description, playing a mobile home or a larger home, the definition, Kevin himself said, at least about 20 years illegal, but where you're, where we're at now, it's, this is where you're at. Planning commission has met, they voted to approve it, which I, unlike you, it's in the most restricted. The council can either accept their recommendation or turn it down.
Sure.
That's, that's where we're at. If we turn it down, Mr. King, that means you just go back up the hill.
I'm going to go back up the hill.
You just go back up the hill a little bit, put the, put that in there, regardless of where you're located in town or across that county line, utilities are available to you.
Yes, sir.
So, you bring it to us, and you're going to have to bring it to us anyway, where it's on this location that you shown on your map, or if it's, if you go right across the county line, you still come in the same direction to get the utilities, to get the water and the sewer. Doesn't make sense?
Out of town.
Right. It'll be, that's an out-of-town rate for out-of-town citizens, that's correct. Okay?
I understand. Well, the only thing I was saying is, you know, ARB-1 designation, which is the most restricted, it says nothing about a mobile home.
It does.
In an ARB-2 general dwelling, under additional use is permitted by conditional use permit, you can put a mobile on an individual lot.
It is, okay.
Exactly right, that's the point, and that's why, that's why I wanted to discuss. No further questions, Mayor?
Do you understand everything, Mr. King?
I don't understand what he's saying, but, you know, I didn't, I really couldn't hear anything. He's talking about, I'm either going to go on one side of the line or the other, I mean, that's what's going to happen.
Yeah, and I would have any problems with that, because if you're in the county, what I'm saying is, we have a town code, and if the council deviates from the town code, there's no point in really having a town code.
There's a trailer down here. We were just looking, you know, there's double wides everywhere in this town, everywhere in this town. But there's one lot that says for sale, mobile home approved.
But is it an ARB-1?
I don't know, the trailer.
It's town limited, so what's, what's an ARB-1 area? What do you, what do you, what do you make of it? I can read you the code, oh, God, is there a process?
Where is there, is this an ARB-1 area in this town right here, in between here and the 400, or is it ARB-2?
Which one? Commercial or Main Street?
Main Street, on three to 400 feet on each side is commercial, okay? Everything that was residential at that time was being bought in. Leaven Manor, Jones Dish, anything where houses are multihouses dwelling or ARB-2, Mr. Taylor can describe that better, our town attorney.
Okay.
Taylor, if you need to, is that a fair description?
Typically, the stick-built homes are in ARB-1. The zoning map, and they had, I think, the big one back here on the wall, shows where the different zones are, as far as ARB-1 stands for residential one, ARB-2 stands for residential two. Leaven just has basically four zones, which are ARB-1, ARB-2, commercial, industrial. Some jurisdictions have how it does here, I mean, they have a whole lot of different gradations, but Leaven's zoning ordinance is pretty basic.
Can I ask a question?
When you're looking at your map, Mr. King?
She's got a question, Mayor.
How you inform your citizens about zone where we live in? Like, did you know you live in zone ARB-1 before your life, or?
Yes.
You didn't?
Where my house is, you know, and I didn't know about the, I don't know if we talked about that up on the back, did we? On the back. I didn't know, I mean, I didn't know when you were talking about it, I didn't, I think I told you to come out here and check for something. Yeah, we did, and I know, I think that's, I think that's what we were talking about, it was ARB-1, because you did explain it to me where that line is.
But before, did you know that you live in ARB-1 zone before all this start-up process, you were going to put your double-wide?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, did you know? All here citizens, did you know which zone you live in? Like, I just tried to understand, how you, how you inform citizens?
You come to the county, you come to the town hall to find out your zone that you live in, that's how you find out where you're living. If you're building a house or you want to move, if you're not here, you can contact the town manager.
We built houses two years ago. I know it was in town, but I had no idea about zoning.
That's what I'm saying, it'd be a good time, that's when you call the town hall to find out where your house is and where you're building, if you're building in a zone, if you're building something that you don't think to fit in the zone, you won't know that till you know the zone of where you buy your property.
Where is, what we bought property in this, in papers, did you have anything about zoning? How do you know what's on?
I know, that's why, you need to contact the town hall to find that out.
But is it, everybody, all citizens, all in Leaven and town, that know which is on they live in?
I bet it. The majority of the citizens in town have been here in these sections, have been here for years, they've been in residential homes, town D, as a matter of fact, is in the ARB-2.
ARB-1.
ARB-1.
Where are the ARB-1?
Yeah, so, you know, it's.
I was informed about that, that it wasn't, you know, but our lot, the way the 17 acres is split, it has the line, you know?
But, but my question is, just like, we bought land, nobody told us about zoning, we have building permission, we build the house, and we still do not, three years after, I didn't know which zone we live in, ARB-2, ARB-1, you know, your map's still 2015 town map, zoning map. Our party, you know, and we even not in town live from the map. So, I just hope citizens of town can find, yeah, we can call if we know.
That's correct. You need, any town property owner, in any, in a town where there's a zoning requirements, it's incumbent, I mean, we don't know where you're moving, we don't know where the property you're looking at, but before I build a house, or before I buy a property, or spend that kind of money on a house, I would find out if I could build that house in that zone. That's why you have a town manager.
Because you know what's on it, and did you know? He didn't.
But he, he found, he found out what zone he was in.
That's why I had to come to this meeting, because of the zone that I'm in, we had to come to this meeting to get approval.
I am at this meeting also.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, you know, trying to explain.
I just, I try to, I'm actually on your side.
Right, oh, I know, I agree.
I'm being wrong to live in a mobile home.
Right.
It's, you know, somebody, young family, they can afford house or mansion, small house, and these new mobile homes, they are not any, small house, so, what problem, I don't see. If it's not junk and you're not putting parking lot there, sorry for my English, it's fine to live there, that's why I'm here today.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a council, you have a motion, second? Is there a motion to say, we approve them, and we approve the planning commission before we do, because that's what we're doing. Does everyone understand the motion on the floor for the governor, ma'am?
Do I understand it clearly? Yes, sir.
Mr. Gilmer?
Yes, sir.
Don't.
I understand.
Then, I'd like to roll a call vote on this.
Excuse me?
I'd like to roll a call vote. I'd like a roll call vote. Are you all standing in the motion on the floor ready? Are you ready, buddy?
I do have a question.
Miss? Go ahead.
This doesn't go through. Is there a process of changing to an R2, or is it too big of a task?
You'd have to amend the whole subject, you'd have, you'd have to elaborate. You'd have to ask Mr. Taylor that question.
You'd have to amend your zoning ordinance, that's what you're asking. And you do have the authority to amend the zoning ordinance if you want to.
For, for that specific 17.4 acres?
No, you, I mean, you can't do it for one particular property. If you amend the zoning ordinance, you amend the whole thing for the entire subdivision, for, for the whole intersection.
You mean, like, wherever there's, if we wish to amend an R1, you'd have to amend the entire R1?
Exactly. Every, every R1 zone, not just one particular area, every R2.
Are we just talking about one double wide here?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And it's all, you go past the last house and that?
Yes.
It's directly in behind the last house.
So a couple things on my, I'm sorry, can we have on, on the conditional use permit or the deed right, that this would be the only home placed on the land? And then two, what I'm taking away from this is, we need to go back and review our zoning ordinance.
Do you want to let them?
As a council.
You don't want to let them enter R2, do you? Well, I, I think what he's saying is that we need, as a government body, to review the zoning ordinance.
I think we just need to figure out what a goods status deck is, instead of saying, hey, we're gonna put a goods on there.
I don't think that's the question at hand here, I think the question at hand is a double wide or a mobile home, or is it a stick-built home? That's the only question in an R1. Is it mobile or not? If it's mobile, it's not allowed in an R1 zone. If it is mobile, it's allowed in an R2 zone. Plan says it in the town code. It is plan, it comes straight. That's the question. That's what, that's what the town council needs to read. That's what we need to review in the, in the actual R1 single-family dwelling or the R2.
Mr. Chairman, I think the focus back at you. What you ladies make, you've got two more meetings, bro.
Yeah.
If you can help the council just a little bit here, as a planning commission, is it, we have, the R1 is the lines are just described. Is there a reason, how did y'all come to the recommendation for approval?
Each one of those is taken on condition, just on permit, permit application.
Right.
Once they, people speak in favor of it or against it.
Right.
Then, then they, they vote what they feel, or how they insert into code to be.
Okay.
And that's the way it's always been, and that's why we've always voted, and, you know, they, they approved to do this for Mr. King, and, you know, the only thing, the only one that I need to say was, was my reasoning, was being the R1, and that's it. It, it, it's over, it's up to the, it's up to you and to the council, whether you want to approve their recommendation or whether you don't. I mean, it's, it's, I don't mean, it's very simple, either you want to approve it or you're not. And why they voted the way they did, we've, we've never, I've never asked, that has never been an issue, because everybody votes what they feel to be, as they really felt to be, and I understood it to be an R1, and that's my understanding of it, and that's, that's my vote. I hate the questioning as to why their vote was to approve it.
Very good.
I hope that...
No, interesting.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One more, Mayor, one question I have, probably for Mr. Taylor. I know it's a fine line, but how do we clarify between in this R1, a single-family dwelling and mobile home?
I don't know that it has any definitions within the zoning ordinance, and I guess, you know, what is a single-family dwelling? Is it a, I guess, one interpretation is to say that it's a stick-built home, another could be that it's, you know, what's, like Donnie said, the difference between a modular versus a double wide, versus, I think they have triple wides now, whether or not it's titled, whether or not it comes in on a frame, whether or not it comes in in sections. You know, every home, to an extent now, is prefabricated, to an extent, with trusses and the, whatever. And I guess it's up to the council to determine whether you feel like a single-family dwelling, which I think is the language it uses, if that includes or doesn't include, you know, a double-wide home. It is a double wide, not a modular.
Does that make any difference on whether we talk about surrendering that title or anything?
Well, you can, with a double wide, you can surrender a title and have it declared part of the real estate. You can't do that with a single wide. A single wide, once it's titled, it's always titled. You can't surrender the title to a single wide, and I'm aware of it. It can't be taxed as real estate. A double wide can be taxed as real estate.
There's no wording in there as far as the title, if the surrender's title becomes a single-family dwelling?
It's not in the, in the town's zoning ordinance, no. Now, I do know if you surrender the title to a double wide, it's treated by the state, but it's no longer taxed as personal property, it's taxed as real estate. So you don't get a personal property tax ticket for it, you get, it's added on your real estate tax ticket. With a single wide, that's not the case. You can have a single wide and have, you know, brick foundation, whatever you want, but you still get a tax ticket, personal property, same as you did for a, for a car.
Okay.
Appreciate your single wide.
Mayor, members of the council, I, I think, and then I'll, I'll push, I think we have, we have worked this, I don't know, I, I've been on the planning commission 12, 14 years. This has always been an issue. I, I think, I know you have enough to do, but at some point, I think if you could really review this and come to a determinational vote, you want, as council members, in the R1, R2, or any other, we take a lot of work off of all of us, because I think it's, it's such a great area that we end up where we are right now every time we, we get this application from this type of...
Right. And we probably need to do that jointly, Donnie.
I agree.
The planning commission and the government body with Kevin sit down and review these, review these orders. Okay, anything else at this point, for the discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor, and I believe I have a request for a roll call vote, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
This, Diana, we have, did you hear, this will be a roll call vote.
Is this to accept, approve the planning commission's recommendation, if everybody's clear?
Yes, it is. It's to approve the planning commission's recommendation, correct. So, where am I starting? I'll start with Mr. Leonard.
No, sir.
Brad?
Yes.
Mary?
All right, with the way the code looks great right now, I'm gonna have to say no.
Deanna?
I'm confused, I mean, I hate it, but I'm 100% yes, because I believe yes with the planning commission's recommendation, so I'm 100% yes.
Uh, Dog?
No.
Scott?
I'm a no at this time, Mayor.
One, is that four or two?
Yes, sir.
The vote is passed, has failed, the motion has failed, Mr. King, so that means the council did not accept the planning commission's recommendation, which for you means that line backing it up to the county, and then you hit the lines for water and sewer, if you choose, if you want to come that way to get the water and sewer.
Okay.
Okay? Good?
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all very much. We have several questions here this evening. Is Heather Oskin here? Could you come to us, Oskin? Barren Basin's Cars to Work Program.
Hello.
Hello, how are you? Your floor is yours.
So I work for a patient at our class, and we're a nonprofit organization. We help low-income individuals and families to maintain sustainability. So, here in West Indiana, the prices of cars have skyrocketed, and our low-income individuals cannot afford car fare yet, or air supply in there. So we are trying to get people in the community to donate, or sell us like their fleet cars, so that we can help those with portal transportation. So, I have been trying to, right, people in the community, and giving them some flyers, and that's to try to donate some cars. And so I just wanted to come tonight to tell you what for the community, if there was any way that you offer to us. If you have any plans to get ready to retire, any personal program, or donate.
Well, uh, we might have a surplus vehicle, too.
Yeah.
Does Miss Lundy have your contact? If it's agreeable with council, if those become available, we'll have Miss Lundy give you a call, and we go on that, as I said.
And there's a good possibility, Mayor, we'll have a surplus this spring.
This spring. Could very well. Okay? Very much. Travis Lambert? Little League?
Mr. Mayor, council members, please, for heavens, coming before us now, we have the Little League, we, our season is approaching, registration has begun, and just want to touch base and share what we have on our agenda for the 2022 season. We have our opening day scheduled for April the 2nd, first weekend of April. We have a backup date of April the 9th, in case of weather.
You have a parade?
Yes, sir. We, that's one of the topics that we'd like to discuss, I continue to have a parade, kind of the same format, I have kind of a handout that our vice president has, he wants to contribute. The same protocols we've had in years past, like we have the teams at the little schools come down the Main Street into the field, and open day, so. With that being said, we have, we have locked down all the details for us today as far as first pitch and things like that, and that's, that's kind of game plan is the first of the day. And, second thing we'd like to discuss, which is their field use of the town field. I know last year that we coordinated with Shane Farmer, and had everything, I think that was, I hope that was a success, I didn't have any complaints on our end, so.
It's called you who have a schedule, this is up right now.
Probably true, probably true. But, uh, one thing that we, we did last year, we had scheduled the Little League at the town field on Mondays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and left two slots open in the middle of the week, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And that was a, for crowd volume, general public to play. Always, depending on registration and numbers, that can possibly change, but we feel like we could create that type of schedule again. I'll work with Shane's on, maybe a shared schedule, not so public.
If you wouldn't care, did you involve Mr. Short in that, too?
Yeah.
You, if you would, you and Drew and Shane.
Okay.
You know, with scheduling. If it worked last year, it appears to me, you're, you're asking the new, the same type of coordinate, so what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
And, this is just kind of a block schedule, we have Little League games Monday, Thursday, Friday, and open Tuesdays, Wednesdays. The, the only difference would be the, once our season first starts, I'm talking about practice, there'll be an influx of people trying to get field time, practice, and things like that, so the month of March may, may vary, but once play starts, that will be it. That's it, schedule. Uh, the other, regarding the schedule, Little League International has proposed a event that they call Sandlot Days, and this is an event that is not Little League related, it's community-driven, and they encourage community outreach. So basically, we open the field up, we have a little sandlot game, it's as simple as that. Uh, what we would, if we incorporate that, we'd move forward, we'd have a midpoint to do that here at the town field, perhaps on a Sunday evening, and it doesn't have to necessarily be a baseball game, we would kind of pose maybe a football game, open up to the public, a wicked run maybe concession, but it's, it's not Little League affiliated, and it's just up to the community, we can have gospel, a Facebook page, and do anything along, so.
One thing, Mayor, I can't remember, and Dog, you can answer this, we just gotta make sure church leagues...
They don't start off.
I mean, what days?
Fridays.
Fridays and Sundays.
They don't start too after Little League.
Little League's over.
It's in August, right?
So this run, during Little League season, the Sandlot, is what you're saying, the same calendar, you took, okay?
Obviously, we would, we'd want to present that on the days that are, maybe late April, when the weather starts.
True.
That's it. Last request, obviously, wouldn't be here if I wouldn't ask for some donations, or money. We're officer nonprofit, and the last few years have been a little tough, getting money, to be quite honest. In years past, we partnered with the town of Leaven on, I guess, allowance, field allowance for supplies. Our current inventory of field material is really well stocked, so we would like to request, instead of an allowance this year, possibly a monetary donation to help with, our biggest needs currently are equipment. That is catcher's gear, face mask for softball girls, gloves, shoes, all, all that stuff that some of the less fortunate kids, they don't have, and maybe team bats, things like that, so, equipment's our big issue this year, so we'd like to request a little financial aid.
Did you have a figure in your head when you came in here?
Uh, a lot of zeros, but that's...
No matter which side of the desk.
Well, zeros shouldn't be wrong.
Zeros are good.
No, we're gracious for whatever.
Whatever you get, okay. Okay, do we have questions for Travis?
I can't see any.
The council, Parkson, anyone, or, we certainly wish you, you all a great season again. We always love the opening day and the parade through town, seeing the kids out with their families, having events over here for them, that's, that's the first weekend day, if the weather allows, the weather dates the 9th, correct?
Yes.
What's council's pleasure or thoughts regarding the request?
In the, in the council's years past, whenever I've come and spoke, we've been given a thousand dollar a year allowance through the town, Little League has.
It's a motion.
It is a motion.
It's our second, so hold on a minute.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, man, it's time for discussion.
What we've done in the past is actually been, I think, between a thousand and $2,500, just depending on what the needs were for the field. This request is unique because it's for equipment that may not be utilized for our field. My initial thoughts are that, you know, our Parks and Rec director has the capability to spend up to a thousand dollars, but my thought would be, that would be our equipment at this field, whatever the Little League needs. Little League needs, but I'm perfectly fine with the partnership that we have, some of that equipment needs, you know, at times used at the glade, whether it's catcher gear, unpowered gear, screens, whatever it may be, I, I would be perfectly fine with that. So, I'm, I'm more interested in maybe letting our Parks and Rec purchase the equipment, it'll be town equipment, that obviously the partnership we have with the Little League, they can get it, they need it, but it'll be here at our field, uh, for use as well.
You were talking about though individual people needing shoes and gloves.
Well, some of the, some of the equipment is unique to, uh, the person. For example, uh, I guess in softball case, uh, most of the girls are wearing the face, face guards, and most, I would say, probably ninety-two of the girls purchased their own, uh, we'd like to have that, give them, providing that to them. Catcher's gear, that's a shared, shared item. So gloves and bats, they, they can be shared, obviously, so that's what really we, we take it on.
So what's proposed, is that hip, is that, what Scott's talking about hip, Little League, Brad, Travis, does this hip go?
Oh, yeah, everything helps.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing I would like to kind of bring up on that topic of shared equipment is, and I think we just had last year, our meeting was with the, uh, third base and first base dugouts, so we'd just like to try to get a designated area, maybe Parks and Rec can help, help out with that, on some of our shared equipment, like we have, uh, Phil, some of Phil Patero baseballs, softballs, now if we have, uh, other items like that, you know, we wouldn't want, you know, them go missing, um, and I bet, so we, we would like to have like a shared Little League locker, so to speak, for our solar area.
Just for them, please.
Little League slash swim team.
We have sports spaces, we have a center up for Little League, we don't, we reduce them.
I've got a question, Travis, you're talking about, I appreciate you, you know, I know it's a lot of time, a lot of effort, you know, coming from volunteers, and it goes for the whole Little League committee, but you're talking shared equipment like catcher's gear, if you all are playing multiple games, somebody played some here, is that something you all schedule, like if Shane or Parks and Rec Director was to buy a set of, you know, hind catcher gear, would that stay here at this field for these games, or how would you all, just a Little League on a set, but maybe you need to, kind of, fill it, I mean?
So we, we do have outdated catcher's gear currently at, uh, our stores at Little League. Uh, we do, as far as the scheduling goes, I provide a, I guess a master schedule for the season, so there will be times the games going on here and at the Glade. Uh, we've never had the shared equipment, of course, I really don't have to navigate that.
Okay.
We just kind of work it out on the fly, I guess, if, if teams that, if they like, maybe if they would like to use the, uh, gear here, they'll check it out in some type of capacity with working quarters with the.
Short, look at my question, like, obviously, there's only one game that can do one over here at a time, so if Shane had a set of catcher's gear, and that team didn't have their own, a lot of catchers will buy their own gear, but I understand it's finances also, um, they could check it out and use it here, but if it's checked out and gone to the glade, and another team needs it here, I mean, that's what I was asking, can, how, how would you, you know, are you going to help us navigate that, or do we need to approve Shane to, to get some catcher's gear to be checked out?
Well, we should have, in any of our, uh, visiting games or practices, we can have a Little League member, uh, be a board member, coach, whatever, they'll be present, so we can make the coach responsible for checking the shared equipment in or out. Now, the only, the only thing is with, with shared equipment like catcher's gear, everybody's a different size, we have four different sizes, those kinds of, so, uh, a shared catcher's gear for game one, they don't get catcher two.
Dan, would you read the motion, please?
I'd like to lift your own motion. Please.
So you're, they're mine, Dan.
Yeah. Since we're able to partner with the Parks and Rec Director, go that route.
Go that route. Everybody good with, with that route?
Unless another council member has another motion.
What's your motion now? There is no motion.
I have my motion.
If Shane can order the equipment, and it can be checked out through him for each team, then that's what he would rather go with.
How much that going to give a thousand dollars now, through, through, uh?
Parks and Rec.
Through Shane?
What's going to give him a thousand dollars?
In addition to the thousand dollars, you know, we traditionally made it, we traditionally did a little bit for, uh, kids' day, so whatever we can do to help the path with the Little League as well, we traditionally bought ice cream for each, each participant, so, uh, you know, I know we're sitting at, uh, I know we mentioned a thousand dollars, but we do have, you know, I'd like also to authorize Shane to use some of our event funds, uh, you know, to support opening day with Little League as well.
Things that you all need for little kids every day. Are you good where we're headed now, is that the hip?
Just to clarify, we will, me and Shane and Drew possibly can go over, uh, ordering equipment, and then, uh.
Up to a thousand dollars, you, when you meet with Shane over the scheduling that you need, just add that to your agenda, okay?
All right.
Coordinate that with Shane and Drew. And then, and the, and the opening day activities, so we don't forget, so the council know what we're doing for the kids, okay?
All right.
Thank you, Travis. We have Mr. Mitchell here this evening, hello, Mark Mitchell.
How are you, sir? I'm great.
You know any of these boys here, or young men?
Two, the link was in front of me, I'm pretty familiar.
Two, believe. Which one's going to speak, or both of you regarding the Eagle Scout project?
They have two separate projects, by the way, Mr. Stinson, who's here on other visits, is also the scoutmaster, so he'll probably be able to step up and assist with anything with it.
Here, you want the boys, the young men to go first, or you want, Mr. Mitchell?
I know they're prepared.
Podium's yours, Mr. Mitchell.
I'd like to ask permission for sixteen by twenty, uh, shelter right next to the newly acquired lands next to, next to the creek.
Uh-huh. Sixteen by twenty?
Yes, sir. People will be funding this through donations and sponsorships, we love taking sponsorships that the council would offer, uh, or donations. And we plan to build this in accordance with any of other, of the other structures around it in the surrounding areas.
How, when do you, uh, what's the calendar for Eagle Scouts, when does he, do you have a certain time you have to have this done, that, to qualify for?
There is a contingency now, Mr. Mayor, they're life scouts.
Okay.
Uh, the project is, uh, the next step, once the project's completed, then they'd be able to sit with the board for a keep, so, uh, as long as it's, uh, they, they have to be finished by the right date, per, they anticipate they wish to be, uh, finished much quicker.
Okay. Dan, you got that sixteen by twenty shelter at the, everybody understands this the new area that was acquired, utilized by the IDA, the potential dog park area, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
At the, any other questions for this young man?
Thank you for doing that.
Do we have a motion to approve, to allow him to pursue his Eagle Scout project?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
They hear about it?
Only if he turns that hat in, only.
You have approval, Mitchell, to pursue your project. Next.
Uh, I was, uh, going to ask for permission to, uh, build a set of bleachers near the northwest, the northwest corner of the tennis courts, um, at JSC, JSC's really park, be about twenty-four feet long, maybe three rows high.
Help me out on the directions now, northwest.
Northwest, uh, on the corner of the first court, near, nearest to the parking lot.
Near the parking lot?
Yeah, there's a gradual slope because the seating is, you know, kind of an issue during games and stuff.
It is.
People sit on top of the, uh, bank where the road is, and they have to move their chairs whenever a car comes by, so I thought it'd be a good idea to have bleachers.
How about, how, did you say, want to mention, how many bleachers or anything?
Um, no, my idea was three rows high and about twenty-four feet long.
Good.
Is this below the newly constructed bathroom area?
It's right beside, on the corner. Could you tell us another your name for the name?
Alex Derrick.
Y'all sure sweating a lot, boys.
Too tough to come in front of this bunch of.
Fun talking about this.
Jerry, is there anything that we need to, that you need to say regarding this project? Mr. Stinson?
Uh, this, uh, Alex project, uh, like Derek's, very, very well thought out, and it's, uh, something that they have a passion for, and they're on the, uh, same, same timeframe.
Very good. Have a motion regarding this request?
I'll make this motion.
It's our second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All votes same sign. Congratulations, young man, you had approval to pursue your Eagle Scout project.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, job well done. Mr. Byers? There you.
Good morning.
Regional Director of the Campanito Regional Housing Authority.
Congratulations, news guy.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity to address the council tonight. I had one item, and I worked with the town's attorney, know, drafted, and it's a resolution. Got any proposed development of the main street bills, level, the old carriage house property. Uh, it's pretty straightforward, eliminating light, uh, in compliance with what the town's objective is, uh, create a little bit of economic development down there too, so, uh, we get, Mayor, we're making an application for a tax credit for the new housing.
Okay.
And as part of that application is this resolution, that would have to be approved by the town.
Okay. This was in our agenda pack, this is another step in bringing about the redevelopment of the, what we all know as the old carriage house property, another step in the, in the lab to get discussed, is that correct?
That's correct.
Any question, or do I have a motion to approve the resolution that you'll find in your information?
Mr. Mayor, I can just point out a couple of things, this is in three parts, the first part is a letter which is titled Plan of Development Certification, which basically what that section says is, is that the town has approved this development, and there's nothing else that the town has to do to approve it, as far as the town's concerned, their plan is fully operational.
Okay.
The second part is a resolution that states that this area where carriage house is, is declared to be a revitalization area under the code of Virginia, because it's an area that's blighted, deteriorating, deteriorating, or likely to deteriorate, which I think everybody would agree that's, that's in fact the case, and it's really the planet's lost the last several years. And then the final, um, part of this is a letter which states that the town, town supports the housing authority's request for federal housing tax credits, that's something, so it's sort of three different, three different things, but I think you can probably vote to approve all three of them.
Okay.
Unless somebody wants to do otherwise.
You'll find these are the resolutions, part of your agenda, behind the town ordinance regarding the voting polling place. Full advice to council, we can approve the letter, given the authority to the approval to move forward on the project as far as meeting our requirements, the resolution that's required for the, the blighted area and revitalization area of that property, and I assume, is that the tax credit letter?
It just said you support their receiving federal tax credit.
Okay. And you're saying we can vote to approve all three at the same time?
Yeah.
Because they're all related?
I think you can, yeah.
We'll have, we'll have a motion from council regarding that, to move forward with the carriage house project.
I'll make that motion.
It's our second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those say aye. Keith, good luck, keep us in form, keep moving forward there, are we getting ready to demo the carriage house?
That's correct. Uh, actually, a week from today, Monday, we issued a notice to proceed, uh, current headlines, the explosion at Eastman Chemical, the company that, actually, we have, uh, got one bid, is down there doing some cleanup work with, uh, asbestos stuff.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but, uh, February twenty-one, we are scheduled, we released notes to proceed, uh, and I have coordinated some with the town manager, prepare that they're going to need water in there, make sure they keep it down with us.
Right.
Uh, we will be placing fencing there to protect general public, uh, once they get in, especially with the relationship, so, uh, we've been fortunate and, uh, got enough, quite a bit of grant money, uh, but I just want to take a moment to thank the town for all of the support that you all have shown for this project, so, without you all, none of this would be happening, so, but, uh, we, we continue, and we are pursuing tax credit application, which we hope is the final key to the funding, and, uh, so I'm making plans on groundbreaking, we look forward to having everybody out soon.
Yeah.
Uh, but we're really looking forward to getting that built down.
It will serve population, you're serving, so, and they're going to start turning down ramp next week?
Well, hopefully, good, hopefully. They've got a notice to proceed, uh, when they show up on sites, when I, when I believe that, when I believe.
Show my calendar, right?
He'll tell you sometime.
I'm sorry.
No.
I'll let you go.
Yep. Again, just staying with your support.
You certainly will, good luck, keep us posted.
We appreciate you, we appreciate you moving forward with the project, because it's just one bit of the town level.
Looking forward to it.
Yes, sir.
A great project for that part of town, as we expand and things improve, thank you so much.
You all did a great job.
Mr. Byers.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Jerry Stinson, with the league grappling, I assume wrestling down here in town?
Yes, sir, it's me.
I didn't know you'd done our wrestling, Jerry.
I'm a little fast there, sir, I'm a pretty good spectator, but, uh, Mr. Mayor, here with the council, thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight, and it's on behalf of the league grappling, and Jim is located, uh, in the basement area of Randy Stinson's HVAC company. And the reason I'm here tonight, we have six young people who are going to be going to the state folk style wrestling championships, and we had four winners, uh, four champions at the regionals in Richlands a few weeks ago, and, uh, we have, uh, a second, a third, and a million men in place, and we'll get to go and wrestle at the state level. Uh, and, uh, the, what I'm here tonight to ask is, is the council, if they would be the pleasure, uh, if they could help us with some entry fees, uh, entry fee is forty dollars per person, per wrestler, uh, we have seven, so, uh, the council could, it's two hundred and eighty dollars total, uh, and, uh, the parents are covering the travel and the hotel and food and all that, uh, we're traveling to Caroline County, we're going to wrestle in the State Fair and Exhibition Building, uh, and this is going to be the weekend of February the twenty-sixth instead of, uh, we have to have our young people there and wait in on Saturday, and they, uh, go to the mat on Sunday, and probably about three o'clock, we'll have the champion on.
Drew, thank you for being here. Jerry, thank you for being here, uh, and we all know, I think everyone knows where, you're talking about below Mr. Stinson's property out there. A lot, a lot of good things for those particular young men and women, do you have one girl that wrestles out there?
Uh, one of our champions is a young lady, she wrestles in the sixty-five pound class.
How big? One size?
She's sixty-five pound, her name's Ivy, and she is, she's got a, she's got a brother that's about two years old, remember? It's, uh, it's interesting, you watch them, uh, she's going back up.
Well, we've heard Mr. Stinson's information regarding the, uh, where they're headed and his request. What's the pleasure of the council, I understand it's forty dollar entry fee for seven of them?
Yes, sir.
They guaranteed to make way, Mr. Stinson?
I don't, I don't.
No cheat days?
I know one that I'm a little bit worried about, he's all of a sudden decides he wants to eat.
We got some fire trucks that can wash them, they don't make way.
I'll keep that in mind.
Counsel's pleasure at this time.
I'll make a motion to support the Lee Grabbling.
In the donation.
In the donation of two hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion for the entry fees, is your second?
I'll second.
And motion in the second, any further discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye?
Aye.
All who say aye? Good luck to you, Jerry, keep us posted, let us hear know what's going on.
So, yeah. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Drew, do you know anything about Brent, is he coming tonight?
Happy seeing you.
Okay, we'll go on to the next. On the side ups here, Sam Jones, Sam.
I'm not gonna lie, when I came tonight, I thought you guys were giving away fifty grand.
You have. No cheating?
No doubt. Um, anyway, that's obviously why I'm here, and I'm, well, I think this is an exciting opportunity for an entrepreneur as well as a town. I'm dismayed as a resident of the town, the process the town council has utilized to make this opportunity known to the public. Until news station WJHL released this story on opportunity, on this opportunity on February seventh, the only reported advertising was in classified ads in the local paper that ran for approximately three weeks. It appears this small ad ran for three weeks in, I think, the Lebanon paper and maybe the Bristol paper.
It's in the Bristol paper too?
In, in the classifieds, I didn't see the Bristol ad.
Bristol was in the sports section.
Okay. No attention was brought to this opportunity until they broke the story on February seventh. At that time, several members of this council shared the story on their own town and personal social media accounts for this first time. Fifty thousand dollars is a considerable amount of startup capital, especially for a small town in southwest Virginia. And this type of opportunity deserves considerable, more advertising both locally and statewide. For a town located in an area of the state that allows proximity to several other states, this type of opportunity merits attention and advertising in the surrounding states as well. Failing to advertise this opportunity beyond the scope of the local paper and one local news station was a failure on the part of the council to bring attention to interest of the town eleven. Utilizing adequate advertising for this opportunity with a reach that extends beyond local boundaries exactly what needs to happen to bring attention to the fact that town eleven is working towards growth and attempting to become a more forward thinking, modern, family friendly. Failing to advertise this grant opportunity and a broader scope was a failure by the council for the town, it was a missed opportunity. As a resident of the town and a resident who's fully supported to vote for the new programs of this council, I would like to state that I find it disappointing that you did exactly the opposite of the platforms that you ran on. You did exactly what has historically been the way this town has led to its lack of growth, declining population and lack of prosperity. You made a plan, talked about it behind the scenes, forward local connections, failed to make this opportunity public by utilizing adequate advertising. And once advertising occurred for this opportunity, you had a turnaround time for approximately three weeks. Uh, from the first classified announcement, if you as a member want a real opportunity for this town, you must be aware, it would take more than three weeks for an individual to have, have a sound and secure business plan in place. Did anyone complete a survey of the town residents to determine overall interests and desires for a new restaurant, including types of food, environment, prices, et cetera? In the WJHL news story, there's an individual who states he was aware there was talk of this grant opportunity and this individual has recently purchased the old little property. While this may have been seen as pure coincidence, it does give the appearance that you were conducting business behind the scenes, off the record, and to suit your own personal interests or desires. Not representing the residents of the town as a whole, this is extremely disappointing as this is how the town eleven has always operated and this is why the town eleven is not a match in southwest Virginia. I wish the applicants who have applied for this opportunity all the best and hope this will become a place where my family and I can enjoy ourselves. However, I want to reiterate that very disappointed in a matter by which as council members made this opportunity aware to the public. It was a failure to gain public interest, a failed opportunity for advertising and bringing attention to our town on a much larger scale. And it gave the appearance that nothing would ever be different than it is in this town right now. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much. This one. Oh, you're a gift.
Yeah.
Yep. So you're right on up here, Ben.
Yeah. So, uh, I'm not gonna ask for money this time. I wouldn't be back for money, but not this time. Uh, I thought I had great news to come in here and tell y'all about your money you gave us a couple of years ago.
Yes.
Twenty-five hundred dollars from Mark Marrow, we had it all set up for, uh, eighteenth, nineteenth.
Twenty, twenty-first.
Twenty, twenty-first of April. School board don't love me as much as y'all do. They shot us down today.
What do you mean, shut you down?
He said Richmond won't let us do anything in the schools right now, we need to wait until September to do it. I think he's getting ready to leave, but he didn't wanna get jumped off. So he wants to come on to the next guy. So they won't let us do it for at least next year, they don't wanna do it at this school session, so.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute. How big an area do you need?
Well, it's.
How many seats are you wanting?
The thing, the biggest thing is, and, and she said, let's just do it at the government center, and I said, no. I will just stand in front of school kids, there's no guarantee they're gonna show up.
I see, well, how many I can lay them in?
How many I can lay them in Castwood, the middle school, and then the community night. We talked to him yesterday, found out exactly what the cost was, we know we got the money covered, we've got everything. But Mr. Brown, I didn't go because I know they don't like me living out there, cause I have a little family there. Uh, which it shouldn't overget somebody that I don't trust anymore. I sent David all the time today to talk to them, and they told David, no, not this time of year, Richmond still got a lot of.
So there's not allowed student assemblies?
That's what they said. I don't know about that, but that's what they said. But I come out, hoping to come here and give y'all some really good news about how I spend my money while coming this morning. Because we're already looking at something, I really wanna make this a yearly thing.
So is that then we kick this thing to the file down, is that what they?
Yeah, we're probably gonna kick it back to September, she called.
That's not a warranty either, is it?
No.
No, it's not a warranty, see, we got H L, or post medical group that will put, uh.
They put billboards up.
Billboards up, last year they put them up and put them down the next day. I mean, we can get billboards, they're gonna pay for all the advertising again.
Okay.
They're gonna pay for it once, and so it really breaks our heart, but we wanna keep doing this, you know? We've worked addicts and stuff for years. You know, it's a whole lot easier to close gate in this council. We've gotta get in front of this people, want to get started, this stuff, get out. So I'm gonna say something, we went and talked to Cleveland Stud the other day because he's got an awesome story. He sort of blew us off, so Cleveland's won't be coming to it next year. I mean, if they don't wanna help us out where I wanna come out, but, uh, that's the way they want to do it, when I ask them for any money, now, we will be back.
All right.
But, uh, and if you got any help with this, I mean.
Well, they have to do what Richmond tells them to do.
Oh, they do.
But maybe now with what, um, we were talking about earlier with the governor.
Yep.
Maybe with what happened today, maybe that'll change.
I don't know, I refuse.
You have to know real quick, Cole, to continue on. They passed, the, the House, the Senate passed to do away with mask mandate, the governor signed it today, that's what.
Explain to me how this is so bad, especially in California, and they have the Super Bowl in the west, and they're with masks on. If you want our mask wear mask, go have a shot, have a shot. I don't care, I have my opinion, it's not gonna be what I want. But the Super Bowl didn't happen, they sent our athletes to China, what starts? Now, if that ain't the last nine, the one in three, you can say, I'm gonna tell you what it is.
Okay.
And I got those people today, we gotta start, we gotta start telling them, unfortunately, to make our horse herd, you guys don't want to play football, but.
We should make this, give us an update in the summertime before the fall gets here.
We will, we talked about, I already talked to school west football field, it's all at Torrey, I mean, we're set up good on this thing, it's just. You might not be here, Mark Marrow, Johnny Bevad is a wrestler, he has a story, and he does a lot, and somebody asked about, had two, two schools asking about bathing. And he will talk about bathing too, cause it's a, it's a big issue.
So are you trying to get them into the schools during session?
Yeah.
Student.
We've already, I've already talked to the principal, I've been to the school, this started two years ago, started about three, four years ago, but we got serious two years ago. And had all the money, town was willing to give us money on it. Uh, of course, the price didn't look as good as y'all did, just so you know, but, uh, we had all the school, I went to all the principals and talked to them about getting their all for it, I talked to Tony Bush, son, and he was like, yeah, let's do it. Mr. Robinson, that pass, well, he's all about it, Joe said, we will look for spring.
So did anybody speak to the school board?
Joe, uh, Pope did today, Dave Pope did today.
He talked to the.
He talked to the school board meeting?
No, not at the school board meeting, we had. I, my problem is I leave at five o'clock in the morning, go back out of town, only on the next Thursday. I don't catch all the meetings, and I'm home, but y'all will see me just to listen, but.
Okay. Well, we'll move forward to target the, just have a, hopefully a target.
Brady having a hard change of heart, but he's gonna have to have it pretty quick, before he doesn't have it at the end of the day, so we can't use him anymore.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's it. I don't know. But yeah, we'll get in the door, if you have any suggestions on who we can work on next year. I mean, we wanna try to continue getting somebody in here to help with this.
I think the route to go, and I don't wanna beat on this, would be to work on Russell County's school board. Dr. Brown has, I mean, he, he has an opinion, but they aren't the board.
I don't wanna get suspended, but.
Well, and I understand, but what I'm saying is, is.
I know, that's what I know exactly.
Is the direction with the school board and to have somebody, I, I didn't know that David was going to speak, um.
Yeah, he went out today, and he almost called you and said you wanted to do it.
And that would've been, that would've been fine, except that David would've been.
Well, I just wanted to get some information and.
Sure, um, but I, I, I'm like, you all, I think it'd be a great program, you have guaranteed audience while kids are in session.
Yeah, and we're gonna do a community night too, anyway, that's what I was gonna say.
Thank you all for coming again and updating, like I said, keep us posted, as we get closer.
I agree, but they getting money back, okay?
Thank you very much. That concludes the public address list and the public hearings, just tell them I have quite a fifteen minute break. Just Diane, can I give you these documents, please? I was about to get into session at this time, we're gonna do business. Ms. Lindley?
Yes.
You better get ready, cause we're gonna have meetings, sit, we're gonna leave the mind on.
Okay.
Okay? First thing we need to do is to sit or, uh, uh, we need to continue this meeting tonight, from next Monday, at five thirty?
Yeah, all of the time, hard to know.
Five thirty, reconvene this council meeting when we leave here to five thirty. At which time we will be, uh, reviewing and choosing the grant applications for the downtown, uh, Ristor Grant.
Okay, so five o'clock.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
Five o'clock, is everything gonna be five o'clock in these meetings?
Five o'clock, except for the next council meeting, which is March seventh at four thirty.
We'll get there.
Okay.
Don't panic.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Don't panic, and what, Diane, you're all right. So, we'll do that when we adjourn, we'll take care of it all later, okay?
Mayor, did we run an additional ad, or did we just direct solicit to everybody that showed the interest and let them know that we extended the deadline? Is that what we did, or?
Everybody called again.
I just tried to let everybody know that if you took application that had not partied back, that it had been extended.
Yep. Yep. Okay, also in your agenda is, Mr. Taylor, uh, sent us a resolution, or, I mean, an ordinance that we need to approve. As you all know, the general assembly changed all elections to November. And we have, we as a town have to designate our polling place between the east and west and up to the Ridge Star, Miss Shore. Uh, the town, this ordinance says that our town elections from here forward will be held at Levenon Elementary in the west precinct, the west Levenon polling precinct. And so with that said, I need a motion to approve the ordinance which Mr. Taylor prepared.
So move, Mayor.
Say it. And this does require roll call vote, Mr. Gilmer?
Yes.
Mr. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Stanley?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Lindley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Short, town manager's report.
Mayor, uh, first thing I have on my manager's report is Broadband RFP, uh, copyback and defamation package. Uh, this will be the more detailed, uh, thing the company will pick up and hit for the generic ad and paper today to advertise that. This is a draft, uh, for the RFP, they'll be picking up as far as the scope of work and whatnot goes. Talked to Councilman Gilmer who earlier, we did make a few changes to it already. Uh, but if you all don't mind looking it over, see if you have any other, uh, changes or anything you'd like to add to it. This would be what the Broadband companies, uh, pick up to go by on those proposals.
When do you, when do you need to put next, start next week's paper?
I put the, we put the, just the generic ad, we just would say to run, but once they come to pick this up, this is what they'll pick up.
Okay. With that deadline, that means we're going, we won't take any action till April, is that right?
That can be, also, I talked to Diane about once we found out we're gonna change that meeting, and I can change the deadline on the next ad and paper and on this, if you'd like to talk about in March, no, it's just back to April, we're going back to it.
Counsel's pleasure on that.
I'd like to move it back to, to March seventh.
Right. You won't discuss it March last?
This is our final.
Then?
Time.
No, Scott?
Did we put it in the regional paper as well, Ristor paper?
He's not, no. It's one of the direct solicits, the three companies that showed up in Levenon's.
Okay. So anybody that attended the meeting, the open meeting, they got direct solicited?
Yeah.
I've got a question on this, true.
Yes, no, don't leave me, wait a minute, I'm sorry, let me finish. So when will the new DIBI, we're gonna meet?
It'll be on that Friday before the seventh, uh, the seventh meeting, so it'll be, they will be.
Fourth, fourth?
March fourth.
Are you expecting any action taken on the seventh, Drew?
I'll just hand you the proposal, you are. Uh, and if you feel like we have enough information to take action, or if we need to move it back, that's, council.
We'll be reviewing proposals, so it may take a couple of days.
That's what I think, so, as long as we know we're not necessarily.
Making a decision on the seventh.
That's why I was curious, cause Mary said she wanted the seventh. Does that mean you wanna vote on it on the seventh?
Would, would we just be discussing it?
You would receive the proposal on the seventh, so you have a in discussed those and.
That is what I, I mean.
You understand that doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna vote one way or the other.
Right, but if, after we discuss it, if we're ready to vote.
Yes.
Then we can vote, after we discuss it.
Gotcha, so the fourth will be fine, Drew.
Right.
Got a question, one. I did, um, one thing on this right here, Drew, designs are required to meet or exceed a hundred megabytes per second download and upload. We were talking about that, uh, with cable versus fiber, does that kinda eliminate some of these, or even put a bit of package in?
That's one thing, you and Scott, talk. That's one thing you and Scott talked about. I'm going to go ahead, the ARPA guidelines for that, they allow where geographical or financial, it's unfeasible, for a hundred upload and twenty download. Uh, I did, when the final rule came out on ARPA, they consider that to be right on the borders, it's still underserved. That's why I'm having this wording, but to get more action, we can do that, but still, I'll still have wording in that for it to be scalable.
Okay, I just didn't, I just didn't want it to be.
Yeah, I was wanting, obvious that, that, that a couple are eliminated. Yep. You know, there's no change.
Uh, the next thing I have, Drew, is number three, a price package for services must be included. Uh, this must include low income package or option. It, can we put any type of a guaranteed price package on that as far as like a two, like we're, like the town's putting up a couple hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue.
Right.
Like, is there any way we can guarantee, put in there a guarantee, it's like two years of price guarantee or something?
I don't know, I mean, I mean.
I think if we're using the competitive negotiation method, that you could have those talks, because, just because they place a proposal or a bid or a qualification, whatever it may be, if we're using competitive negotiations, before we sign a contract, that's exact language that we could have, uh, line that out, I mean, whether it's, you know, the overall cost of the project, whether it's a price point that you'd like to see, you know, for us, for our investment, maybe help our town citizens.
Sure.
I think we have an opportunity to do it during the, during the competitive negotiation.
Note that, and the reason I'm saying that is, you know, if we agree on a price pa, you know, they obviously give us our price package, we put it forward for investment. A certain company gets the bid and takes over the project, and then next year they raise their rates a hundred percent, it's going to be a tough pill to swallow, I mean. Uh, and if we, if we don't have any language in there, or, uh, you know, if we don't have any language in there against it, there's nothing really we can do about it. Can I have you something, Kevin, can you help us with that, I'm sure.
Anything else on this topic, Drew?
Uh, second item on my report is, uh, our local choice through Anthem Insurance, we know, uh, we got an increase eight and a half percent on policies. I'm asking for approval, uh, through new Anthem services. We have to, uh, through July, policies, we have to, uh, have that in the bill then by March twenty fifth, and there's no extensions on that.
Now, they allow two options, are we still going to do a lower cost option as well?
With the dental and non-dental?
No, with the, you have key advantage expanded, they allow a lower cost option. I think they allow two plans, and I think with the increases and board about, did we not do that before Diane, at least once this year, but nobody, nobody took advantage of it, maybe?
I think so.
You know, Beverly gave me that, that, the one that's highlighted, she had, I mean, I can give a favorable C on that. She, she gave it to me, she just explained, uh, that that was the one we had. And then the breakdown, obviously, on what we paid for single door, and then, uh, and then she was, apparently there's an extension in the past, and I blurted out this year, that, that they're down to an extension, so.
So, does this increase, I mean, does this plan, does this offer our employees the current insurance they have?
Same plan.
That's what they're, exactly, okay.
Drew, if they're mayor, I would just like to get the council's okay to give Drew direction, if there's no additional fees in the town, you know, for administration for, on, on local choice's part, if we can offer a second option, I think that's important, um, because it, you know.
To these glowing new?
Employees, sir.
Okay.
And I would suggest the key advantage five hundred.
Is it a motion?
So move, Mayor.
Is that for active man retirees?
Mr. You? That will be, yes. All eligible, all eligible town employees.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Further discussion? All favor the motion, say aye? Post name, sign.
Next item I have, uh, as you all know, I've been in talk with Rich Hunter from Novo Solutions. I included his proposal, uh, in the information packet, because it's kind of a rundown of what they do. And if you had a chance to check out his YouTube videos or, or that kind of stuff, you kind of understand, so an overview of it is, basically, I've been working with Rich, he, he came and talked to me about what the sharing app platform, what they do. It's basically a, an app or a software that we would have, uh, our supervisors would be in control of. And it's basically, uh, just an update, we still do stuff, pen and paper, filler, worksheets, uh, that kind of stuff, this is more of a technological based side of it, uh, keeps your inventory, it allows residents to create work orders and, uh, you know, calling for potholes and that kind of stuff, and me and Rich have kind of worked together, as you know, I've kind of been working on possibly a town app, I can propose to use to pay water bills and specialists at theater comes available, talking about events, have a calendar of events, reserve direct center, shelters, that kind of stuff. So Rich has been working on a, an app to go along side of this. Uh, and then the proposal kind of tells the different stuff that, that they can do as far as the, the shelters and uh, paying the water bills through the text, and it allows, I think, a hundred thousand text messages, uh, a year to, to residents. The road's going to be closed for, you know, a water leak or a town event, or trash pickup is changed because of holidays. Uh, we can send that out in mass texts for people that, that sign up. It's coming along really good, and I think it's a, it's really impressive, and I think it's the way the town needs to look as far as moving in that direction and upgrading their stuff. I know I inclu, I included that proposal in here just to give you a price idea of what some of this stuff is. My recommendation right now is just to allow me to keep shopping around, uh, so as much as Rich has done for this and, and and tries to cater to their needs and this and that, I think Novo still has quite a bit, I think we'll be paying for quite a bit more stuff than we'll still be using, uh, in, in their software and in their program. I have been in touch with Lane Group as far as getting some GIS mapping for our water lines, uh, and that kind of stuff with some money that, talked to Brad Humphrey, the VDH could be possible. Like I said, I, I just included this, I'm not asking for this proposal right now, I'm just showing an idea of what kind of software is around there, and I think we need to think about moving forward in those potential. If there's any questions on that. The next item on my, uh, list is, a, a company has reached out to me called Archive Social, and another, this is another thing that's coming with the future. The state of Virginia Public Records Act is now classifying social media posts as public record. So, just like any other public record, those are required to be archived for the detention period. And social media, unlike emails and texts, is kind of controlled by a third party, so it's hard to archive, uh, in context, because, you know, if you try to archive something, who's to say the person made a comment, deleted or edited their comment, and once you save that, it's not saved in real time, archived in context, that if something's foible, uh, or that, uh, sort of thing. So this is a company they've reached out, they have access to archive in real time. It's around six hundred dollars a month is what their price is for that. I've talked with Janice, Eric, and Shane, the three that run our social media, uh, platforms. None of them have very many conflicting messages or angry posts or anything along that line, as of right now. But just talking with her, uh, from, the lady from Archive Social, I just thought we should have a heads up as far as this stuff's coming in with futures, public record and archive and that kind of stuff, so, uh, I just thought maybe we, uh, maybe get with Kevin or, uh, Janice and Shane. And the police department is probably the most, uh, vulnerable, vulnerable, uh, FOIA and first amendment products as far as if you delete someone's post and that kind of stuff, so, like I said, it's not, another thing is, I'm not asking for that. Company, I left the proposal right now, I'm just, uh, giving a heads up for that kind of stuff that's coming along. Next thing is the, uh, ARC Engineering Services. We placed, uh, ads for engineering service for ARC Grant for the theater, uh, two separate times, and didn't get a response. I've reached out to a lot of engineering companies, and they had some COVID outbreaks and that sort of thing was the reason they couldn't respond. Uh, so I guess I'm asking for guidance on how y'all want to proceed now, uh, legally, by the procurement, after, since we have advertised fourteen times, and we have Lane Group contracted for general services. I talked to Kevin legally, we can move forward with Lane Group, or we can advertise again and see, uh, if there's any other engineering firms interested. But that's.
I would think we better, we ought to be in place and ready to go before, well, I don't know, since we're going to meet on the seventh. It appears to me that we're just going, what I, what conversations you've had, what I've heard, and the efforts that you've made to reach out, that Lane Group will continue to be our engineering services, is that what you're saying?
They can be.
Can be?
If you want, yeah, if we want to move forward now, we can, uh, legally, uh, they can be. I just didn't know the timeframe, I didn't know how, the whole reason that it didn't work out the last time, while we were having to redo it.
Because it hadn't, we haven't received our contract, I haven't signed a contract with L A or C G R N yet. It's still in Washington, L A can see it.
So.
I guess Rose never replied, Shane agreed.
They, they reached out to them a couple different times, and they said they may swing by and pick up the applications, but I don't think they ever.
Yeah. I mean, we've done our due diligence, more than once here, so, I think it's probably important that we be in place to have our engineering services ready. That's my opinion.
That's my thought, Mayor, once, when it comes to be, at some point, we're going to have to disclose who we're using for the A and E services aspect of the project. And a lot of inspection work, if I'm not mistaken, you know, we may bid out the sound, the lighting and so forth, but it still has to be inspected to make sure that ARC, uh, you know, the quality work and what, what was bid out, specs and so forth, meet the requirements and uphold certain standards, so, I'm good with, when it comes to that point, we have to declare, we don't have any other options, we're going to have to use that service, A and E service agreement that we have with Lane Group as, you know, our engineering front for the project.
That happens in the next three weeks. Can we, can we go ahead and make a motion to authorize that, if, once the contract becomes available?
So move, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All favor say aye? Post name, sign.
And a couple other things, uh, added on, uh, talked to Jessica Powers yesterday. Contacted him about possible first responder grants for the police radios. He said he may have some communication grants, uh, opening up for first responders at the first of May, he's going to keep me, uh, in the loop on that, and also, uh, some possible BDM, BDM grants, uh, for communication, so they're going to keep me updated on those. Uh, Russell Theater, talked to Jessica this morning, uh, she said the theater sign is there, and they'll be working on it, it'll be on the floor and complete in about two weeks, and, uh, they're scheduled for install for mid-March, uh, for the facade and the Russell Theater sign.
Is that the picture you gave us?
It is, yeah.
That looks good, it's going to look really sharp.
March, they're not?
Be on March. It looks good.
Drew, freshen up for a second.
Yes.
Mayor, did we receive, were we able to receive funding from Emergency Management Services for salt reimbursement from the storms, like when the state declared, you know, the declaration of a state of emergency or so forth, for, for storms in the past, did we get reimbursed for? Okay.
I just got a little. Just ask, you better be out there.
And, uh, last thing on our report I have, kind of goes back to, we talked about maybe the zoning ordinance needing to get done, we need to update that, but also the zoning map is outdated. I spoke, I spoke with James Baker at T and L, uh, the last one was done in two thousand and fifteen, doesn't include the Homestead area, uh, or Gardenside, and there's a couple of areas that are actually missed zones, uh, like the ones out here, these commercial buildings under some residential, Cindy actually found that they are actually have been re-zoned to commercial. So I talked to James Baker from T and L, uh, to see if he had any updated ones, I'd like to work with him or whoever you all like to work with to, as far as updating that map.
Cindy found in the archives that those are ones on Main Street had been re-zoned to.
Commercial, yeah, that's what I wanted to hear today.
But then going back to what you said about getting, can we discuss a day to meet the planning commission to get that R one definition, I mean, that's another, I just want to get that definition in there, so it's cutting your eye.
I think we need to find a definition, get a permanent definition of single family as well, but.
I think, I will rely heavily on our town attorney to walk us through that. It sounded simple to do that tonight. Donnie? And now, as we saw tonight, if we're going to fix it, like Mayor, it needs to be fixed hopefully one time. But it has to be something that we agree as a governing body, once we're, even when we disagree developing it, it needs to be a document we can go by moving forward.
Easy, and easy to understand.
And easy to understand.
What a, what a, what a single resident means.
Absolutely, that's what he, yeah.
Because, I mean, to me, that could be anything. And that's the reason.
So.
The way I view.
We need to, uh.
We've got about four days to choose from, around half of it.
Yeah, but what I'm, I'm afraid that's going to take. I mean, when we meet the planning commission, there doesn't need to be anything else going on.
We said that.
I know that, but we can't take action. These other four meetings in a row have already. I say, Drew, call Donnie. Probably need to coordinate this to Mr. Taylor. Because we're, obviously, we probably need time to get some data together before, I mean, before we meet, what are, in other words, what we actually looking at doing. You know what I'm saying? It seems Mondays are the best for everybody here, is that true? Meeting wise, Scott.
Yeah, pretty much, Mayor.
Pretty much for you?
Mayor, I forgot, I'm out of ten minutes. Which, I mean, which one?
Is that the text?
I just want to say, would you call?
I'll put you on. That's right. So, uh, did you have a date in mind, Ms. Stanley, that you want me to look at?
Um, if we're going, we're here the next four Mondays, so. So we're here.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's okay, we're here the twenty first, we're here the twenty eighth, and then the seventh, and then you all will be here the fourteenth.
Or the, or the twenty first?
Yeah.
Twenty eighth is just narrowing down applications.
It is.
That'd be perfect, probably.
Let's do it the twenty eighth then.
Okay.
Can you get up and Donnie?
Yep.
And Kevin, does that work good for you, on Monday, the twenty eighth?
Yeah, I'm going to mute, what time?
Five.
And then, Drew, what I envision, if we can come to a decision at the twenty eighth, what it means, then we could call these, then we could call them back, you know, we could, and if something were to change with our zoning, then we could call Mr. King back, you know?
Right.
Why are we already decided that, don't we?
I don't know, Kevin, you tell me if I'm, oh, shit, I mean, I don't know if we can go back, Kevin.
Well, I mean, if you, if you liberalize it.
Well, I mean, if you, if you liberalize it, then I don't know what you're going to say.
Can he reapply?
He can reapply, or if you liberalize the definition, if you say, single-family dwelling includes double-wide mobile homes, then obviously, he wouldn't have to apply.
So we could just, Drew, could just make a phone call?
Yeah, if, yeah, depending on what you do.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
I'm saying, so you can say it's something that we know based on what we have to relook at and want to look at it this day, just to, I mean, I would just leave the door open for him.
Do we need to let him know that it's possible?
Yeah, I would let, I would let him know that it's possible following this meeting, that it's something that.
Does he want me to know again, it's just like?
I'm just, I mean.
Say what?
We have to define it. Okay, well, I'm just.
I mean, if we get more lenient, I agree with Kevin, but if we get stricter than what it says, then I don't think we need to contact him back. And I think we're leading towards, I think we're leading towards eliminating.
I think we are.
Mobile homes, period, double-wide, single-wide, the permanent foundation from R ones in general.
Well, that's what I think.
Give us false hope because you've got plans on.
I'm glad you're. Call back, Ellis, for sure, you're right. Okay, sorry.
Can I ask a question? These, do we already have all these zones that just the four, the three that we will wait? We already have the ones of the other zones.
We have all seven of the seasons and they were, for the new area, they were delivered today.
Okay, that's all.
Yep.
Do our Cedar Fest ones, were they able to fix those and make sure they fit?
Yep, it's called Billy on that, Drew, probably.
See if they were able to fix them, and they had all of our Cedar Fest.
They flawed, they didn't measure them, they weren't the accurate measure.
They, our first Cedar Fest, they were.
All of these should be the exact same size.
Our.
She's talking about the whole ones.
Very first ones, very, very first ones. And just, if they redeliver them, that means that they fixed them, they had all of our Cedar Fest ones.
Okay.
All of our first ones, and they were supposed to refix, they were supposed to fix them.
And that was fast times, I believe. That's all. Where are you going? What you got? Oh, okay, I thought you were bringing out of the whole business. What, what you know, I know.
No, I just had a question, Drew, before you take off, I know you're not leaving, but. In the minutes last time, we talked about the street light down on Donald Seymour at the church, did you ever do anything?
Actually, I got in touch with Jeff Di, and I'm scared to commit with him again next week, he was quarantined for a little while of COVID, and I think he's had some stuff with his wife, so he's.
Okay. Just keep me updated on that if you don't mind. One other thing, Drew, and I didn't, I had the opportunity to bring it up on our council table. I'm still concerned about this Centos and Airmark thing for $1,600, it's just we split them.
Right.
Still, but over $3,000 a month, I don't know the answer to that. But I just, I feel like it's, I don't know, I just feel like that uniform stuff, it's, I mean, we're in, now we're in two contracts, two different companies, and we're, we've split the bill.
Right.
You know what I mean? Try to keep your eye on that. And I, even if you need to designate, and here, here's the issue, and I'm only speaking from experience, but here's the issue. I know from personal business experience that if somebody doesn't scrutinize these invoices and the department heads and the employees, like Mr. Presley, if he does, if he gets four uniforms instead of the six that he was supposed to have gotten, if he doesn't raise that to his superintendent and that comes up the chain, we're billed for it. It was a constant battle with all of them, with me in the past. So it, I mean, our employees have to be, our employees have to be on top of this. And our superintendents have to follow up with you or Miss Diane or Janice, whoever, whoever we dictate scrutinizes that invoice. But it's almost like, I mean, it's almost like the Great American printer invoice. I mean, that thing, you know, I beat that horse and still saw it. I'm hoping that's the last month of that $500 and some dollars that I reviewed, is it more than close? Have we sent that thing back yet?
Yes.
Okay.
We didn't send about January 1st, we don't pay taxes on it this year.
I'm like, I'll come with a resolution to have the taxes, what was that, somebody was saying?
Resolve.
But anyway, that was a little so far, so, sorry. But I, I just, I mean, that uniform stuff has got, I mean, somebody's got to put eagle eyes on that because they make money by charging for things that we didn't get. I lived it for 12 years and I said, enough is enough, so, you know. It's like direct TV, you talk to a new company, you got all this huge great deal, and then you're back into that same circle of.
Okay, anything else for Drew right now?
Yes. V D H funding.
Yes.
Do we know any updates from D E Q or V D H funding?
Oh, V D H, I talked to Brad Humphert about 3:15, he was trying to add in my stuff, but I didn't have time to add it in there. He contacted me. Mayor, there's a new, let's see, I looked at that. There's a new bipartisan infrastructure wall fund that the V D H is going to be in charge of. And he's going to get me the enrollment date, he said it's probably around April or May for that. Maybe they've got 50 to 90 million over the next five years that we're going to pass down through that. And he said that would possibly be as much as 49% principal forgiveness on those as well. D E Q, I haven't heard anything from the Land Group, I'm going to get in touch with them. For one, we're going to apply for our V D H, same thing Brad was talking about, the other one, the revolving one. And he said, once you apply for that, then they automatically put those applications in this infrastructure wall fund too, so you'll have to be applying for both of them. But I'm talking with Land Group this week and I get update on the D E Q.
Just, Mayor, just still concerned with, you know, with the revolving loan, loan funds versus grant funds. We all know how much of that's going to be granted, how much is going to be loaned, and I hope D E Q understands that it's a tough choice for us to sign up for when it could possibly eliminate us.
Count of the grants. Yeah, I'll clarify with Land Group too, but I was thinking the last meeting we had, they said usually that principal forgiveness comes around March, they let you know how much that would be, so.
Thank you, Drew.
Speaking of V D H, Drew, I know. Before we, before we have that meeting with the planning commission, can you find out from the Virginia Department of Housing what a permanent foundation is for that meeting, and what is that considered? Is that a fiberglass underpinning, is that stone, is that, is that center block and bridge, is that, I mean, I want that down.
We're talking to use, we're talking to use our county building officials.
Perfect, can you reach out to him and get us a definition on that? Because I remember in the past, Mr. Zombak, Kevin, I don't know if you remember that, and I do. He had some questions about that, and it was a little bit gray because that came unannounced, we didn't even, we didn't have a copy of that, we didn't even know what the conditional use permit said, but if we're going to, if we're going to talk about R one versus R two, and then we're going to talk about permanent foundations, I want to knock all that out in the same meeting, now everybody's on the same page. Thank you, Drew.
Anything else for Mr. Short? Hey, Drew.
Good.
We have with us the same thing, Mr. Snade, who's with us, serving for Mr. Deskins. You don't know where it's going to play catch law, Drew. Also, Chris, on behalf of our insurance, a lot of us, we, our condolences are with you and the loss of your father last week.
Appreciate that.
We appreciate all you do, his friendship to a lot of us here, and look, you've been in our thoughts and prayers.
Appreciate that.
So, um, I was, Stephanie gave me the report for January, we did, you know, I found out at four o'clock, I was on features, basically.
You are.
So I've got everything, if you need anything, but the 11th Police Department Monthly Activity Report for January, we had 26 summonses, 10 were moving violations, 16 were warrants, we had seven non-reportable motor vehicle crashes, three reportable motor vehicle crashes, one DUI risk, 15 misdemeanor risks, one felony risk. We had 46 disabled vehicles, and that's a toss-up between the, you know, vehicle assist or unlock. We logged 10,205 patrol miles, used 889.2 gallons of fuel, and answered 296 calls. So that's a pretty good number for, for a month. And I've got everything else, can I make something to anything else?
Do you know, well, you probably don't, and we all of the.
He doesn't. Yeah, so we are, the first vehicle that they purchased, that the England that you all authorized, has been delivered, and it is only two or three weeks out from being completely outfitted, it's getting marked and it's getting all like some sirens, cages and stuff in it. The second vehicle Eric said is in the early stages of purchase, will shoot you right now.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get excited about that surplus we were talking about earlier?
The surplus?
A little bit.
Oh, well, you know.
You look shocked, Drew, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, do you have anything?
Just have an additional, Mr. Mayor, because I'm already discussed.
All right. Committee reports, Mr. Jackson, do you have anything? Ms. Stanley?
No. I will, I'll back out. She is working on the brochure.
Yay.
She is working on the brochure, I think the majority of it is in the final stages, we're just waiting on that cover photo from President.
Okay.
So she is, she is very close.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes, sir.
Let's see, Mr. Fields, you had your committee meeting.
All right.
Mr. Gillen?
Yes. The ARPA committee has some recommendations for the council. First of all, Mayor, the ARPA committee recommends it's under possible future projects. We had looked at a possible $8,000 contribution to the shooting range facility for the police department. And the committee recommends making, changing that to an allocation and moving forward, matching the $8,000 grant that's currently in a secret checking account for development of that project. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side.
Also, under ARPA, Mayor, the committee recommended moving forward with the 2023 police utility vehicle. That was in the budget for, or would be in the budget for fiscal '21, excuse me, '22, '23. We had actually put it under recurring payments for a future purchase into next fiscal year, and the committee recommend moving forward with that purchase out of ARPA funds, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
Sir, say.
I'll say.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side.
And the last thing on the ARPA, Drew, be sure those purchases from Little League, be sure that Shane puts that into, put that in front of the ARPA committee also for outdoor recreation. Mayor, I would like to piggyback a financial committee meeting on one of those Mondays, there was. There was a couple items we talked about, I think, in the last financial meeting, consolidating some accounts. I don't know if we want to talk about acquisition of property, but that, we'll probably, we plan on talking about that tonight, so that may not, that may be taken care of tonight. There was maybe one or two, two other items for discussion I'd like to bring up, so.
Can we do them on 28th?
Whatever you think's appropriate, Mayor, I'll prepare.
Okay.
28th.
28th.
If we do a continued meeting next week, that, I mean, that might be better to do.
I'll be, I'll prepare next week, and if we need to put it on the 28th, that's okay.
Is there something we can just talk about in the meeting then?
Yes, yeah.
Without having a committee meeting?
Yes, sir.
Let's do it then.
But we are going to speak on the property acquisition tonight, because we're all.
That's my plan.
We're all done that.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Gillen? Committee wise?
No, sir, Mayor.
Mr. Flynn?
State Street, just to give you all an update, I mean, budget wise, we're on budget, it's kind of hard, it's a little hard to track though. We got roughly a $250,000 allocation coming out of the third and fourth quarter, whichever way we allocate that. But we are going to have some funds in the fourth quarter. If we have an extended amount of funds, then we'll get, do some restripping, maybe even possible talking with Drew and State Street Committee about possibly doing some slurry in secondary roads, try that out. I'm not sure we'll have that amount, those amount of funds. We've utilized roughly 200 tons of salt, is that correct, Drew? And we've requested, we've requested 50 more tons. And I know that sounds like a lot, and it does, but I, but I will tell you this, 11 streets are not out or blocked even before it rains, so that tells me we're not over utilizing salt. We had four storms there that hit pretty close, back to back to back. I've already talked to the Streets Committee, or to the Streets Department, I've talked to Drew, I've talked to Danny, I've talked to Robbie, about our plowed truck operators being mindful of, if they're plowing four inches of snow, they don't need to be running salt. Sometimes they're in when they're down, close to the asphalt, and it's, they're skimming snow, that's when salt needs to be applied. But just like I said, they're not, I don't think they're over using salt. I even went as far as to, just to be transparent with the council and the public, due diligence wise, I went as far as to send a truck to be weighed empty, send it to get load of the salt, and send it to be weighed again to make sure we're actually getting charged for what we think we're purchasing. And as long as we have a flat bucket, which is a two and a half yard bucket of salt that's going in those trucks, we're getting our money's worth.
Correct, Drew.
Down to the, how much that salt weighs per square foot, we did the math, we ran the numbers. Just so happened, they put three heaping buckets on that truck that day, so we really got our money's worth. But I spoke with Drew, I spoke with Robbie, spoke with, you know, pretty well the Streets Department, and let those operators know that if they're not getting a flat bucket of salt in those in loader dippers, that the town's being shortchanged, but anything flat or above, it's fair. We're actually coming up to the positive, just as a state of our own, it's payable, there's $23,000 worth of salt purchased in the month of January. But with that being said, again, I mentioned it last time. But V dot, I mean, State Streets, I appreciate our employees because, I mean, they're, they're out there working at night, and they're splitting shifts and they're short-staffed, and I just, I wanted to say thank you to them. But other than that, Mayor, I'll, I'll get some real close numbers, closer to the end of the third quarter on State Streets budget, we'll know exactly what we can put towards the downtown lighting project. I don't think it's going to be, I think that 250,000 we talked about, Kevin, I think we're going to be safe on that. But other than that, State Street wise, we're losing a Streets Department employee, which we spoke on earlier in person, now that's not, not a concern. It's a concern, I wish him the best, but it's not a concern from the town standpoint, we'll move, we'll move forward and be okay.
Good deal. Anything else, Dan, at this point? I'd like to get a motion to go into close session, section 2.2, verse 371, 1A, item 3, acquisition of property, item 7, legal, about legal counsel.
Could we add personnel to that, do you, Mayor?
Sure, item 1, personnel. 1, 3, and 7, correct, I'm making a motion. Sir, say.
I'll say.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same.